Right now.
Okay, welcome everybody to the meeting of March 31st. We're on, I guess they call it Zoom, it's on camera, so bear with us, we probably will have a few hiccups, but that's all part of the course, at least. We're having a chance to meet and still do some decisions. So again, welcome everybody and welcome councillors. Few of the small rules for the councillors, you'll raise your hand if you want to speak. Or when we vote on something on an item for decision, you will be able to raise your hand. So we know you voted. And Danny Muse, our warden, will be pitching in to help if he sees anybody raising their hands that I may not have on the street. So we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll make a motion for approval of the agenda and the add-ons. Anything that you want to put in there more than what we've got?
Move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Could we add one more item for AD? Waste Park? Is that okay with the mover and seconder?
Yeah.
Who seconded it?
I did, I believe, that I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm okay.
All those in favour should divide by saying aye.
Aye.
Pardon my name. Motion carried. Any conflicts of interest? Okay, none that I can see, Danny, anything?
Nope.
Very good. We do not have any presentation tonight. So and there's no adoptions of minute either. Number four, so we move to number five. Business arising from the minutes. Regional agreements and structural reform conversation. There is nothing at the moment to report on that. So we'll table that for the next meeting. We have under B, library funding update. And there is nothing to report on that either. So moving to six, I would like to ask our CEO, Anna, to update council and the people out there on the COVID-19 pandemic. If you wouldn't mind, Anna?
You hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great.
Is it, is it six or five on the agenda?
Oh.
Five.
Five, okay.
My apologies, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure I was on the, on the right page.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Deputy Warden. I will just go through some of the changes that have happened at the staff level and community level regarding the COVID or coronavirus that has hit us up by storm. So first of all, and a lot of you know these things, but we're, we're live on Facebook, so we want to make sure that our residents also know, also know this, so. It was, the date was April, April, yeah, it's, it's March. I believe it was March 18th where we made the decision to close the office to the public. Now, we're close to the public, but we're not close to serving the public, so it's two different things. The first is that, so most of the staff is remote, is working home. We do have some exceptions, and I just want to talk very briefly about each department and where they're at and how they're doing their work. So myself, I'm, I'm remote, I'm working from home for the most part. And doing a lot of the meetings that I would attend are done remotely as well. Coordination staff meetings, regional meetings, et cetera. So for the, the other departments that are working based from home include Alex, our GIS technician, Charlene, community development. Both our rec staff, Nat and Jeanette are working from home. The, Marcia for the most part is working from home unless she's required to sign checks, same with me, if I'm required to sign checks, I'll go in. So Hans is working, Public Works Director is working from home. Oh, John will be coming in here and there to make sure the inspections are addressed, although clearly the need for, or the demand for inspection has reduced quite a bit since this has happened. So, and I'll talk a little bit about who's in the office, Scott is in the office, our IT person has been virtually there every day for, for full day work. As well as Tara, who has been manning the Public Works incoming inquiries. And Bonnie and Sheila are alternating times, so all of this is to make sure that our staff is socially distancing themselves from their work, from their work persons. So we've done the best that we can to arrange most people working remotely, Laurie of course is remote as well as Kim. Also remote. To talk a little bit about Public Works, we do, we are still taking a look at our wastewater outlets. Vaughn and Marty are definitely there making sure that there's no issues with our wastewater systems. So, you know, those are absolutely essential services and, and we have to make sure that they're maintained. Hans has made sure that there are safety procedures in place so that we can all work in a safe environment as possible. We do have protective equipment that has been put in place as well, in the case we need it. Now, there are times where most times people are working alone, working on their own within a safe distance. There, nobody is allowed to, to travel together, so we're not, you know, so, so if there's two Public Works officials going to a site, they're not traveling in the same vehicle, they're traveling separately. Courthouse and Archives are closed as well to the public and Caitlin, Caitlin who was self-isolating is now clear of that, and so she's been going into the office here and there, Judy and Caitlin organize when one is in the office and one is not. So, safety services are, Peggy, the safety services are not visiting homes any longer, they are calling in homes. And so they're making arrangements to, to support the elderly as, as well as they can in this environment. But they are not entering the homes at all. So we are definitely abiding by the, by the, by those rules. So I'm sure I've forgotten or not gone into, excuse me, all of the details regarding, regarding the staff. However, I can assure council that it is absolutely important that we protect our staff from, from being exposed. And we are constantly doing processes or policies to, to, in this changing world, so. And Hans has been leading that from a safety perspective. In terms of communication, we have been sharing a lot of the public, the provincial updates on our Facebook site, website, when applicable, but mostly Facebook. We are taking all of the correspondence and communication from our regional EMO. And, and also sharing it on our site as well. Any business tools or resources or funding opportunities that are coming from the federal and provincial government are being posted on our Facebook site, so I would encourage residents to continue to look at Facebook. There's a lot of information out there now, I would encourage also to go to the provincial websites if, if there are residents that have questions about Corona. There's a lot of very good resources online that can help people that have questions. Today, there were 147 confirmed cases of COVID in Nova Scotia. Obviously, that number changes every day, hopefully, hopefully, you know, hopefully it doesn't, hopefully there'll be a time where that, that number means pains itself, but I think, you know, looking at the other parts of the world, we know that there's likely to be an increase and hopefully people are socially distancing and doing everything they need to do to, to reduce the onset of this virus. Any resident who is traveling outside Nova Scotia must self-isolate for 14 days, so that's provincial rules that are coming in. If you develop symptoms of respiratory illness, and if you're not sure what those symptoms are, 811 is, is a good place to go. HTTPS 811 nova scotia.ca or just search 811 nova scotia, you'll likely find it. And they'll be, it will tell you what those symptoms are mostly, you know, mostly related to fever, et cetera. I'm not gonna, I'm not a, not a physician, I'm not gonna go down through the details, and some certainly going to miss one. But certainly, if, if they're displaying those symptoms, you should limit their contact with anybody else as soon as possible. And again, 811 nova scotia.ca is a place where our residents can get information around what those symptoms are and what to do when they're not feeling well. The, so we have established, obviously we have established a budget, we've been working quite diligently on a budget, but then it feels like the budget's gonna flip, kind of flip itself upside down with this change, ever-changing world, so we are going to be doing a draft budget and then we'll be looking at what changes need to happen in this new environment. So I know there's an item on the agenda regarding interest relief for taxes that are outstanding at this time. I will, I will share with, with council that the province of Nova Scotia is being asked to consider a province-wide program to assist municipalities. There's been a lot of request or demand for tax deferral. So, meaning, you know, a delay of pay, of tax payment, not, not, not an elimination of tax payments, but a delay. So, that's completely understandable based on the environment we're in, a lot of other financial companies that are doing the same. However, we are in a situation where we too require cash in order to run our business. So the province is going to be asked to support potentially a, a tax deferral plan. None of that is, is, has been, it has not been set up as of now. What we're, what I'm sharing with you is that the request is, is going to be brought to the province. The premier has gone on record already saying that he will help municipalities, but there's been no specifics as to what that is right now. What is likely, I mean, what's likely to occur is it's not going to be a blanket deferral for anybody, not everybody has been impacted by, by this financially. Although many have. So there'll be some form of criteria that say, well, if this happened or that happened, you may be entitled, now this again is presuming that this, that this that the province will support some form of tax deferral for our residents. We cannot do it financially on our own, we don't have, we have neither the cash flow ability nor the ability to borrow money to do it. We don't have the legislative authority to do that. I think it's important to say that, not just to council, but to those watching, because we are a creature of the province and we, we cannot do certain things without their legislative approval. And this is an example of that. Now, we can set when taxes become due, we can set interest rates for our taxes, and we obviously can set our tax rate. But there are other things that we cannot do. So that is, I just wanted to give a brief update from the provincial perspective, which, which we, I have been involved because of my membership in AMANS and NSFM. So, so that is, will be interesting and we'll see what happens there. I think that in terms of public works and what I would say briefly is that for those of you who are using wipes, it is very important not to be flushing those wipes. Particularly if you're on a municipal wastewater system, it really, really gums up. It really gums up the, the pumping stations and all the machinery, it does not dissolve. It, it just stays in the system and actually expands when water hits it. So it's been a problem in all municipalities, because, you know, we're using wipes, we're using a lot more wipes. So just a reminder to, to throw them away, not in the toilet, but here, in your garbage. So the services that are, excuse me, the services that are impacted that we are indirectly involved in, so solid waste, our waste park. Our waste park is close to the public, it doesn't mean it's closed, it means all commercial traffic is still continuing, our solid, our garbage pickup is still occurring in our regions. And they're being brought to the waste park and the waste park is open for that purpose. But there was, there were too many instances of people not self-isolating and arriving at the garbage at the dump because the dump is safe. But it really wasn't, so, so the, the staff had no choice but to, to limit the, the traffic going on in Solid Waste Park and our deputy warden is the chair of, of the Solid Waste Park and so he's well, well aware of the decision-making that occurred there. Mariner Centre is closed, as you are aware, the airport has reduced its staffing, so it's been on-call staffing, Waste, Waste Check has closed its offices and is operating remotely. Same with Yasta, so, so many of our subsidiary companies are, are doing exactly what we've done. So, so I, I see that there are questions coming through. I don't know that council, that you, you may or may not be seeing them, I'm, I'm seeing them here on my chat. So, and I will just hit those, the answers to the questions as I, as I see them. Oh, actually it was sent to me privately, so I guess you wouldn't see it. Sorry, did you want me to answer the questions now, or do you want me to stop for questions?
I would, I would prefer if you answered them while we're all listening. I, I'd like if you would answer them. You mean those that are online right now, is that what?
Yes, yes, so, so typically, I mean, we could go to council questions first and then the chat questions after, it's up to you, Chair.
Let's go with the council question, and I see that Lucia had raised his hand.
Just a suggestion, if, if those of you who aren't muted can mute, because I think the mic and the speaker's loop, it makes a reverberation, so if you're not speaking, I think it'd be prudent if we mute our mics.
Thank you Lucia. Calvin has a question.
No, it's just muting.
Are you all set, Calvin? Okay, I don't see any other questions on my end. Danny, do you see anybody asking questions from your end?
No, I don't see anybody, I think we're seeing some of the same people because, oh, I see Kathy just raised her hand.
Go ahead Kathy.
Okay, thank you. I had some questions that somebody was asking me yesterday, there was a, they called me and debating. There was a confusion about the trails. I know the, the provincial trails and, and the beaches are all closed, we know, we all know that, but then there was a question of around like the, the rails to trails and other trails. They were thinking they were closed, so they called me today, am I allowed to walk on the trail, I said, yeah, sure, you sure can. So that was a confusion, and then there was other confusions that, the Department of Lands and Forest had had posted something yesterday on, on Facebook. And that made a confusion, and they were seeing like groups of people, like the picture had three people riding bikes. So, and there were, the seniors were saying, well, if, if they're telling us to stay home and they, they are driving around everywhere in groups. So that was making the confusion and was sort of making, making, you know, people right now are getting they're getting, what, how can you say, they're getting anxious, they're afraid, they're confused. So it's understandable that they're asking all these questions and, and, you know, like, people are wondering when this is all gonna be done and, and I understand what, where they're coming from. So, and especially the seniors, I mean, they're, they're very vulnerable and afraid. And I, I don't know, I feel for them getting up there too, so. So I was just wondering, maybe somebody could answer the question, you know, like, what are the real rules? Because there are so many things going on Facebook, there's lots of things that go on Facebook that are not true, that are not accurate. But I think we have to stick to the provincial and the federal rules. I mean, the provincial premiers and Dr. Strang are always saying, you don't have to go out, stay home, stay in your yard, do things around your house. So, and I think that makes a confusion, then they're saying, well, yeah, you can go to a trail, but I don't think you should be driving to a trail, but I don't know, it's just maybe somebody can answer to that question.
Go ahead, Anna, if you would mind. If you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't mind, and I think, I think, you know, Calvin probably has a thing or two to say about the, the Public Point Trail, because he's, he's also, I think, I believe he's a, is a member there, but look, what the, what the province is saying right now is, if you, you know, your, your best option is to stay home to flatten the curve, and so that doesn't mean you can't leave your house. But they encourage obviously to do that in a socially distant or physically distant way, I guess the new term is physical distance, not socially distance. So the answer to your question is, is the trail open, the trail is open. But what they're saying is, is that if you're gonna go on the trail, practice safe physical distancing. They, they don't want, certainly the province, and, and we all understand that physical activity is very important to mental health, and, and so there are a lot of people that are looking for activity. You should not be doing physical activity in groups, you should be doing it on your own. Or if you, you know, if, if you're in a situation where you're walking and you see a friend that's walking on the trail, you respect the six-foot social distancing, and if you can't do that, then it's, it's not necessarily the, the best option for you if you, if you can't do that. That's, that's what we're hearing, not all trails are open, so it, it would be best perhaps if, if, if those that wanted to check before could, could contact somebody that's responsible. The Yarmouth Trails Association closed and opened the trails, so I can see why there was confusion there, because when the state of emergency was called and there were like provincially owned beaches and playgrounds, et cetera, that were being closed, many interpreted that to also mean trails. So that changed the next day, so it is open. In terms of being in a, in an environment where there's a lot of activity, like, like three, four people biking or whatever, all in one place, and that's, that's not, that's inconsistent with what the province is saying right now. You know, obviously if, if it's your own, you know, family unit and you're not leaving the house and you're doing things together, well, that's different than actually going out in a social environment and doing that. They're also saying that in a essential services are still open, so, you know, pharmacies, grocery stores, there are quite a few things that are still open. But if you go, go, and if you have to go, go in, get your stuff and leave, don't go as a family, go one person. Right, and, and that's, that's the, the repetition that's occurring every day, every day. There are still people, quite frankly, that are not respecting social distancing that are coming back from a trip and not self-isolating, I'm absolutely hoping that's in the minimum. But there are still instances of that happening, unfortunately, and that's why the province is taking more and more precautions.
Very good, Anna. Calvin, did you want to add anything to the trails, or are you okay with that?
I guess, speaking about the Public Point Trail, of course, we seen that confusion too, we weren't sure if we're supposed to close or open, anyway. So eventually, because it's not municipal or provincial, we could stay open. What we did is, we posted on Facebook the rules and regulations, we also put up signs, you know, stating that you have to respect the, you know, social distancing, physical distancing, you know, six feet apart, no no gathering at the trailheads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so the signs are posted there, and this morning I went for a walk and I seen a few people and we practiced social distancing and racked on, so I think, you know, I guess we're kind of wondering if, you know, if it was open and all the other places weren't, that it would draw a lot of people, but I don't, you know, we've been monitoring that and it's just the same people who usually walk, who have been walking there, so.
Thank you councillor Dr. Moore. Councillor Albright.
Thanks. I'm just wondering, I know that they've talked a lot about, and I've heard it over and over, we do physical activity not to socialize, but to exercise, is kind of what the premier has been saying. And the trail is, trails are open and I go on the trail almost every day. And I have on our trail, I've noticed a big increase of people on there, but not just people. I've noticed four-wheelers and side-by-sides and dirt bikes. I'm wondering if that is gonna continue, are they going to limit? Because, you know, you have side-by-sides with two people in the side-by-side. And I realize they're probably from the same household, but I don't know. But I am noticing that people are parking and coming on the trail, like, I, I go on the trail, I always did, so the people I met on the trail, I'm still meeting on the trail, which is typical, but I'm meeting people that I know are not from this community on the trail, and it's not that I'm tattletaling or, but I'm wondering, like, I'm a little bit concerned that it may stop, because I still want to continue to use the trail, and I'm just wondering if with the side-by-sides and the wheelers and everything else, if there's been any direction for, for that.
I'll pass that on to Anna, could you maybe give some insight, if possible?
Sure, we haven't received any information that will further restrict. What we are hearing however, from the premier is, is, is if you're gonna do physical activity for exercise, do it in your own community. Right, don't, don't, you know, drive to Sonyville Station and do your exercise, and of course, the logic around that is that if you're in fact infected and you had no idea, you, you're risking not just your own community, but another community now, so they're trying to restrict where people are doing this exercise. It is absolutely possible that they will further restrict trails for that purpose, I have not received any information on that at this time.
Thank you very much. One question, Anna, I don't think you've addressed this, maybe you understood. If some people that owe taxes and let's say they're, they're behind, a couple of questions on that. Where would they go to, to pay their taxes, like, I think the credit union you can go? Or is there any way calling in with a credit card or?
I'm really glad you asked that question, I didn't go into this detail as much as I should have. First of all, there are many ways that people can pay their taxes. Our tax department is open and is, is open every day for any sort of payment arrangements, we are still receiving checks in the mail, you can continue to do that if that's one of your options. You can pay by credit card over the phone. You can pay online using your, your TD Bank or, you know, whatever. Your, whatever your financial institution is, you can find Argyle as a supplier, Argyle Tax. And you can actually make a payment online. Many of our residents have chosen to do what we call CAFT, which is basically a prepaying, a prepayment monthly billing. So you can also call in and say, look, I don't, I don't really, I don't think I can afford to pay all right now, but I know my tax bill's coming and I really am a responsible taxpayer, I want to make sure it's paid in time. Can I get on the payment plan? And you can. And so also you can actually, if you get to the office and you didn't know that the office was closed, we will not be opening the door to serve you, unfortunately, but we still, we have a Dropbox service which is on, on the building, and so you could drop your, obviously not cash, but you can drop a check or or some other document that you wish to give to our staff. And so our policy is to wait 24 hours before actually dealing with that material. That's just the medical professional saying, you know, you don't have to, you should, they're not saying, I mean, they're just, they're just maximizing the safety around the spreading of the virus. So 24 hours later we would deal with that and we would post a payment, et cetera, no problem.
So where's that Dropbox, at which door?
It's, it's not at the main door, so if you park and you see, you get to the main door and rattle, rattle, it's locked. There's signage that says, go around, and so the signage tells you to go to the second, to second door, which is which is not the, the main door that people will come in typically, so, but it's, it's literally around the corner and it's, and it's, it's accessible, like, so you should be able to access it even with some physical disability of some, of some form. Should still be accessible. Does that answer the question on the taxes?
Yes, yes it does, Anna, yes. Danny, from your end. Yes, yes, it does, Alaa. Yes. Danny, from your end, any questions from, coming from your side?
No, no, there's none here. I had, I had a question. And when we were talking about the, the trails and that, and I guess I, I've had some questions or I've seen people talking about that, that if you're 14 day self isolated, do you have to stay in your own yard? Can you go for a walk? Not on the trails, but if you were walking on the road, or some say you can't even go for a drive. And I'm just wondering how, if that is correct or not.
Alaa, go ahead. If you have. You could unmute, Alaa.
I'm sorry. I think I muted and then unmuted. I think there are some actual councillors, councillors in here that actually experienced this personally because they went on and did self isolation. The, the answer is, is you're supposed to not have contact with other people. That's the, the idea. Right? So if you're in your yard, you can be in your yard. And some people who are self isolated actually did take drives. I don't think there's anything against taking drives, being alone in a car. It's that, it's, it's that you're not supposed to be in contact with anybody outside of the people that you, you would have to be in contact with in your home. So that's the idea. So I mean, Strang would say it a lot better, and the premier would say it a lot better. But that's ultimately the issue. I think a lot of people are really concerned that if people see them driving, that they're going to get reported, right? And, and so there's a lot of that going on. And I, and I really like the language that Dr. Strang uses. He says, let's, let's not, let's not live in fear. Let's, let's, if we see somebody driving around that should be isolated, maybe we should be thinking about what kind of help they need. Because obviously, if they're driving around, they're, they're looking for, or they're needing something. But I don't think there's anything against driving on your own. If you're isolated, you just can't have any dealings with anyone. You can't touch anyone. You can't go anywhere. You have to stay isolated and away from others until isolate, until the 14 days go by or that you're, and that you're also symptom free in 14 days. I'm sure, I'm sure councillor LeBlanc might have a bit more insight on that.
Yeah, so I had to do quite a bit of research, you know, being a community leader. I didn't want to do anything I wasn't supposed to upon my return from the US. So we did, and my wife being a nurse, we did consult with the Nova Scotia Health Authority. And as Alaa mentioned, and I think the premier would say the same thing, there's no such thing as being too careful. However, if you actually want to get down to the rules, you're, even if you're self isolated in the 14 day period, you are permitted to go outside of your property, providing you don't come into contact with anyone. So for example, when I was isolated, I did still go for my morning jog. I refrained from going on the main road, on the sidewalks, in case I would come into contact with someone. However, on a side road where you can see for a few kilometers ahead, there is almost no chance to meet into someone. That's how I took it. However, at the end of the day, you can't be too careful. So I mean, you don't have to lock yourself in a closet, obviously. However, use common sense is actually, I think, one of the thing, line items we did see in, in the document we received from Health Authority. But as far as actually boiling it down right to the rule, Alaa is mirroring what we read. You can't come into contact. You don't have to stay exactly on your property.
Thank you, Nishan. Does that answer your question, Danny?
Yes, yes. And it was more, it was more to, since we're on live, on Facebook Live, that, that it was, it was more so that people could hear, you know, the answer, not just for me, but for people that are out there who are wondering as well.
Okay, councillor Albright. You saw your hand.
Yeah. So while we're having this conversation, while we're talking about trails, I got a text from Natalie, who is our rep person. And she said that they've actually been in, in meetings and talking provincially. And she said that it's advised to only use the trail if you can walk to it. So not looking, as we said, you, you're not supposed to drive to it and then go for a walk on the trail. It's only if you're able to access the trail by walking to it. And that the premier has heard that there is a lot of activity going on on the trail. And he's not very happy about that. So there is a possibility that if there continues to be a lot of activity on trails, that they may close them. So I just wanted to share that information with you.
Thank you very much, councillor Albright. Alaa, I'll pass that on to the questions you've that you've been receiving. So why don't we go right there while we're on the subject?
Yep. And I want to, first of all, I want to thank Natalie because she's, she's posting, like, our, our staff is watching and they want to make sure you're appropriately informed. And as it relates to, you know, active living and recreation, Jeanette and Nat are on top of that. And, and their work, although they can't do the work directly with our residents, they can do it indirectly through promotion. And, and, and obviously, some of this work is being done through meetings as well, provincial meetings. So I want to thank Natalie for that. And Natalie also said that biking is being promoted since it promotes physical distancing. So obviously, you're not, you know, you, you don't want like 25 bikes in the same, but, but you can, you, you get the idea that biking is being encouraged because you're clearly on your own and you're, and you're biking away. Personally, if I'm going to do physical activity, you know, the one thing about everybody staying home is that there's a lot less traffic. And I'm not necessarily, you know, advocating for the safety or lack thereof of walking on the side of the road. But certainly, there's a lot less traffic now. And, and it's another way to socially or be physically distant. So the questions that we've had is, that I've received through, through Scott, who's been sending them through. Do we have any cases in the municipality? I don't know that. The department, the the NSHA or any of the health professionals are not actually indicating where the cases are occurring. And they're doing that for good reason. What they want you to do is assume it is in your community, not that it's not. And so if they start saying, well, there's four cases in Cape Breton, well, somebody from, you know, Argyle might say, well, it's not here yet. So I can, I don't have to physically distance myself. So they're purposely not sharing that information. And so we absolutely have no information as to where these cases are. We will still, will we still get our tax bill as usual? I would like to have mine paid on time. The answer is, we're doing absolutely everything we can to send the bills in exactly the same timeframe as we've done in the past. So the good news for residents right now is that we typically bill not until late May, early June, usually early June, right? Because we usually approve our budget in May and we have one bill that we send a year. And that's usually in the month of June. Hopefully, lots is change, or will be changing in that period of time. But as we all know, there's a lot of uncertainty around that. When the tax bill will be due is still something that we're discussing. Typically, it would be due the end of July without interest. Okay. So there may be a situation where that could change, but that decision has not been made and has not been presented to this council as of yet. The next question, will you put the new building on hold till we know the outcome of the virus? The answer is no, we will not be putting the building on hold. The building could be put on hold depending on the contractor. So the reason why I say no is that we do have a contract with the general contractor. And the general contractor is obligated to do the work in a period of time. Construction is still considered to be an essential service. So until we know otherwise, I think the work will continue as per usual. The, the couple of things that I would say about that is that the money for the building is capital in nature, and we already have it. And so we can only use that money for capital purposes. And in, in this case, we have about $460,000 that we can only use for this particular capital project. So as long as the show can go on, the show will go on. From an economics perspective, I think it's important that, that that happened as well, because these are local vendors, local contractors doing local work in our community. And that particular line of work has changed drastically in the last month and a half. And so I see this project as not only a, a building that is accessible to our people, not only is it a net zero energy, it's also a project that is, that is instigating economic stimulus in the community. So I think it's, it's very important. I would, I would say, lastly, it's financial, so I like to talk about it. Is that we are borrowing, as part of the agreement, we are borrowing money from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to do this work. And the money that we're borrowing is, is based on a prime rate. And there is no better time to borrow money than now. So in terms of like the cost of doing business from a borrowing perspective, it's a very good environment for that. So I hope that answers the question for, from, from the perspective of the residents. It could be delayed or it could go faster depending on what the building contractor is faced with. And in fact, if the province was to say, shut down everything, well, then obviously, our, our project would be impacted by that. If anyone wanted to go pick garbage in the ditches, can we go? And where would we put the bags in each area? That's a question. We have delayed our actual official garbage collection or ditch cleaning program. I'd say if somebody was doing it on their own and wanted to do that on their own, what the municipality would be prepared to do if, if it knew about it, if we were reached out, is that we would pick up those, those particular bags off the side of the road so that the resident doesn't have to be burdened with that. And we would make arrangements for our, our solid waste collector to, to bring it to, to the dump, to the landfill. So we're not encouraging or discouraging that to happen at this point. Like, if you're socially distancing and you, and you walk, I'm sure you walk by those ditches every day and you see the mess and it drives you crazy and you want to clean it, you know, I, I get it, right? We, we, we all understand that. And so certainly, if you wanted to do that on your own, you're absolutely able to do that. And if we knew about it, again, we would arrange for those bags to be picked up safely by our public works officials or our solid waste pickup people. I think the only other couple, there's only one more question, I believe, and it's, is the municipality able to put a list of trails that are open on their Facebook page? The answer is absolutely, we can. We actually did. But it was a while ago, so maybe we'll pull that information and repost it. And there is, oh, yes, and there's one last one. Thank you, Scott. Speaking of mental health, have there been measures to put in place municipally for crisis counselling at a distance for the community members? I would say not, not municipally. However, there are definitely provincial services out there. And what we will do is we will post that information on our Facebook site so that those that require mental health services will at least know where to get it. We, we're not, we don't actually deliver that service municipally. And, and so I can't speak on, you know, when that service could be provided. But, but we will certainly forward that information on our Facebook site for that purpose. I think that's the last of the questions.
Thank you, CEO Muse. Very good. And it's, it's good to see that the public is engaged like it is. Okay, we'll move on to number six, which is COVID-19 decisions.
I think we had Glenn. Glenn, did you raise your hand?
You have a question, Glenn?
The only thing I was gonna say, I do have some of the people that are going for walks now in my area down here. They are picking up garbage on their own. They know it's not sanctioned or nothing like that. Or discouraged by the municipality. It's something that they, they want to do on their own. And I've made arrangements. They leave the garbage on the bags on the side road for me. Then they text me and tell me where they are. And so that's just something we're doing down here. And one other thing, I heard people talking about self isolation and where you can go or what you can't do or that. The only thing I would say is if anyone is out in a boat and they're supposed to be self isolating, they're not sure whether or not they're infected with the COVID virus or not, and something does happen, please, 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 when you call 911, if you need the services for an ambulance or whatever the case may be, please let them know what's going on because there's been incidents of that across the province where they've been calling for paramedics for some reason. And they're not telling the 911 dispatchers that they may be a carrier. And it's just, it makes for a lot of problems for everyone involved. If somebody has COVID-19, by no means are they a criminal or anything like that. It's something that they sure as heck did not want to get, but they got it. And I think that's where we all have to be behind them and support them and help them anyway, in any way we can. And that's all I wanted to say on that one.
Thank you, councillor Diggan. Okay, we'll move on to number six, COVID-19 decisions. And the interest on accounts, and that came about because of a letter that was wrote to the municipality of from the Chamber of Commerce. So Alaa, I would prefer if you could maybe speak on that, please? Put your mic on.
There. How's that?
Good.
Open the file just to make sure I had the, the document in front of me. So, so basically, the, the background and situation is that the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce is seeking to assist their businesses and taxpayers, which is, which is, you know, is part of their mandate. The letter that is attached to the, the agenda requests the following, requests a bunch of things, but I've, I've tailored it so that the consideration is relevant to us here in Argyle. The two pieces that were relevant to us were to suspend all interest charges and collection on property taxes until at least June 1st, 2020. And secondly, pay all bills urgently to local vendors where possible to ensure liquidity, their liquidity, of course. So so basically asking us to suspend any interest expense and collection on taxes until June 1st, 2020. Now, the, this letter was sent to, to all of the, all the municipalities of the county. So I presume they'll each take a look at this particular request. The our bills don't come out until June. So any suspension or on interest or collection of property taxes would be on old property taxes, just that we're all clear. It would be on property taxes that were billed in June of 2019. So, so any sort of suspend, if we were to agree to that, then we're, we're actually only speaking about last year's taxes that are outstanding. Paying all bills urgently to local vendors where possible to ensure liquidity is an, is an excellent, excellent suggestion. And certainly, we, we endeavor to do that as a municipality now or even before COVID. It's, it's, it's a priority that we have. So in order to advise council on its choices, just to give you some budget considerations associated with that request, the amount of interest that would be generated in March would be about 5,800 on all accounts, 5,400 on, on property taxes. And there's other, other billings that would, would amount to the rest. So what would happen, of course, if we receive payments, and we will be receiving payments, that number would decrease with each month until the month of, well, until the new bills would be due. So so, and we are, again, as I have mentioned before, we're anticipating that the 2020 billing shall be done relatively on schedule. And why I say relatively, I say within, within seven days of last year. And so in the assessment of the request, there is that understanding that this is on old taxes, not on new. And so it should also be noted that the request is dated March 18th, 2020. And there are things that I've said today that may not even be true tomorrow because that's how quickly things are moving around COVID. And so, so of course, we're dealing with the best information that we have when we have it. And then, and it changes often. Since that time, I'll just note that the federal and provincial governments have implemented significant subsidies to support local individuals. And the premier's announced that he'll be providing assistance to municipalities in the form of, we're not sure yet, but it's something. And, and also, we, we have obviously some business related measures that have been put in place, subsidies for wages for those impacted by COVID, as well as some programs to protect landlords. All of these programs have been announced since we've received this letter. All of these um programs have been announced uh since we've received this letter. So uh there are some municipalities you should know that have already decided to waive interest, and some of them have waived it for a month and others longer. Some have absolutely chosen not to do that. You should also know as counsel that financial institutions that are implementing a deferral of loan payments are not writing off the interest, they're delaying the payment. So, you know, if you have a lease with Ford or Toyota or or a loan or whatever, uh the interest and principal are being deferred, but the interest is still. Is still being added up. It's just the delay in in requiring the payment. So and I would say that most or all of these institutions have implemented controls. So that only those impacted by COVID actually qualify for this deferral. So if I'm gainfully employed and. And uh I can't just apply to have my loans uh deferred or my interest deferred, I have I have to be impacted by by this uh this virus. And I don't mean as a as a as as being sick, I mean being impacted financially as well as potentially being sick. So the request to suspend collections and interest um on taxes and also pay vendors urgently is. Kind of counter each other, like we require cash to pay our bills. So um I would just like to, I mean, I don't think it was intentionally saying you got to do, you got to do both in exactly the same way. I think they're just. The the Chamber of Commerce just rightly so, looking to protect their businesses. I I would note that um we do have cash in reserve. As a municipality, as we prudently put away money, but don't have enough put aside to withstand. Months and months on end of non-collection. In fact, no municipality does. Our 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 expenditures are fairly uh substantial. We we do. A lot of different uh service provision, of course, for us are, you know, assuming that our operations go as normal. We we spend about seven hundred thousand dollars a month. So and and for every municipality, that number is all over the map, but it is, it it's not a small amount. And it's 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 either we're we're providing the service or we're paying somebody to provide the service or paying the province uh for for fees that they charge us, so. All in all, with an eight point four million dollar budget, it's a monthly expenditure or out cash outflow of seven hundred thousand. So we cannot actually borrow to to fund this kind of uh request, as I mentioned earlier, that would require the province. To help us on that. So I I would uh I have prepared a recommendation and um I. There's there's two sections of the recommendation first, that we would support a tax deferral for residents and businesses impacted by COVID nineteen. So part of the difficulty of just writing off the interest is that it you may not be helping. The businesses or individuals that need it. You're helping those that that haven't paid the bill yet, which is an indicator that they might need the help. But not necessarily um it's not necessarily helping those that need the help directly because of this pandemic. So that's the difficulty with just simply writing off an interest. Uh there are other ways that municipalities can certainly. Help with cash flow, and which is why I would recommend a tax deferral. For residents and businesses impacted by COVID nineteen and that the evaluation process. Be consistently applied across the province. So the municipality is not choosing how people are paying or not paying. That there's actually a well-defined process where that would happen. The good news is is we have a little bit of time because we don't have any new bills until June. So. And and counsel may still wish to respond uh by writing off the interest. Uh and and that's completely okay. You you do have the power to do that. Um I would limit that initiative. Uh in if it was my recommendation uh to to only the month of March, which is that the bills, the interest would be would be charged basically tomorrow morning. I would recommend against a long-term interest suspension on all outstanding accounts as it's the response is not targeting those in greatest need. Uh or or we have no information to say that it is. So I have suggested a couple of motions which is attached. I will, I will. Pass the floor off to to you to debate and discuss.
Okay, counsel, uh any discussion and you you've seen, you've all read the the uh. Suggested motions and the items. Is there any discussion? Raise your hand. Danny, anybody on your side? Okay, uh there'll be a suggested motion uh by anybody maybe then to to go on one of the options. I have somebody to pick that, uh, Council Board?
I would make um the option two. Counsel wants to target those tax group impacted by COVID. Move that the province of Nova Scotia be asked to lead a province-wide tax deferral program where the province enables appropriate. Lending to support qualified taxpayers. Program will target businesses and residents impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic.
Very good. Is there a seconder?
Second.
We've got a seconder, Laurie, did you? Can you pick up who the seconder is? Thank you, Laurie. I see, yeah. Okay, any more discussion on the uh on the subject? Danny, anything from your side, Danny? No? Okay, all those in favor, see the far by saying aye.
Aye.
Or raise your, sorry about that, guys. And contra my name, motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is uh grants organizations, process and deadline. Let's have a look here. Uh. The request for consideration by our CEO. Is outlined a few options on uh. On the grant work organizations within either by the looks, by looking at this, to approve uh the way it was done before. We could move all the grants uh to organizations, all put them all in September. Uh would you have a few words maybe to add on to that? Help me a bit? Could you press your on your.
My computer tells me when I'm muted, which is good. I think I would forget. There's a lot of computers that I bet you there's a lot of people that would like to mute me, so. Lucia is nodding way way too hard. All right, um so. So first of all, uh thank God that we did the online um grants to organizations piece. I think it's. I think it's been a very positive uh add-on and and I think uh probably other municipalities may 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 pick up on this as well, but. The um so what we have is what we're noticing is we're getting responses, they're verbally or actual applications that are saying things like. We're not going to have that festival this year, you know, or we're not going to have leisure like I do or uh because of, you know, because of the pandemic and then. And then we have other people saying, well, we'd love to do work on our our community halls, but we we don't, we don't actually have anybody that will give us a a price. So all of these things are adding up to uh a bit of an issue regarding our deadline. So our deadline is, there was some confusion. Typically, it's April fifteenth, and I think there was conflicting information on the uh on the online forums. Uh but the the deadline is actually April thirtieth, or at least it it is today. Uh what I'm asking councils to consider. Delay that or extending that deadline to match the September fifteenth deadline of our fall grants. And so by doing that, you are causing certain things to happen, okay? So the uh. The first thing is that uh you will be, you will be getting applications, you have applications already today, and you'll be getting them until September fifteenth. Many of those organizations, uh so some of them might be able to wait for their cash, others won't. And so you'll be, you're going to be asked to to consider um. What I would call uh an on-the-fly decision-making rather than it being a certain uh amount of applicants and you making a decision on that. So traditionally, that's what would happen on April fifteenth. The the deadline would come and go, and you'd have a list and you'd make a decision, right? And you'd allocate the money. You know exactly how many people uh you knew exactly how much money you had to dole out, and you knew exactly how many applicants were making an application. So you could make a decision in a clear, certain. We cannot do that now. We're in an uncertain environment. So what we have to do is is if we're going to extend the deadline, which I am absolutely recommending we should. Is that we have to find a way to to approve grants as they come in on the fly. So there's two options that have been presented. I'm sure there's eighteen options at your disposal, but I decided to to put a couple for your consideration. One of which is to say, look, you've got six months, you've got April, May, June, July, or September. Six months, you got the, you know, you got, I don't know how much cash you have for the grants to organization, you divide it by that amount of months, and you dole out that much per month. That's that, then you know what you're going to dole out each month, it's certain to you. But of course, the downside of that is is that you don't, you don't know what's coming. So you're making a decision that's locking you in without knowing what's coming ahead. So the second option would be that you would make decisions on the fly uh periodically, same as the first one, you would make periodic decisions. But what you would do is isn't is uh is leave it open. So you can, so for instance, you might have five, seven applications, three of them are festivals that may or may not occur. And uh but they're, but they still want the application in because in case it does happen, they want to be funded. And so you can defer those decisions, right, until the time comes that you know will happen. Uh or alternatively, you have, I don't know, the Trails Association asking for seven K, and we typically give them, you know, four or five. And uh you might decide, so the, so you might decide, well, we'll give them, we'll we'll make a commitment for two now. And then we'll revisit that particular uh application later after the deadline passes. So that's what that that's this option two is the option I'm recommending. It it requires a little bit more work on your on your end, a little bit more imagination and creativity on all on all of our ends. To to make sure it works. So what would happen is is the advantage of it is that people would get their cash. They would get some of what they've asked for at the beginning of the summer or late spring, which is typically when we would issue those. And then and then you would have a second option to look at all your applications and then decide how much money you want to dole out and for what reason. So you get two cracks at your applications. Now, uh you should know that we have to advertise what we give out. So that's the only rule the MGA puts on us, so we can give to nonprofit organizations. There's no limit as to how much. But what we have to do is 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 advertise the total, the each each individual applicant and what they received. Now, the and so the hopefully, we will have a local paper to print that in. Right now, there is no local paper that would accept an ad for that purpose. So we would have to put that kind of information in the Chronicle Herald or another paper. So just, it's another wrinkle in this reality. So that is, so basically two recommendations. Uh one is to extend the deadline. And the other is to is to is to have a a dual system where you're taking two looks at applications on periodic basis. The second look would be after the fifteenth of September.
Very good, CEO Muse. Uh so what would the wish of council be? Any? Anybody want to discuss it or anybody want to make a motion? Okay, uh I see Calvin with his hands up. I think it's.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Warden. Just wondering about the uh the online uh application, which is great, but. Is there probably groups out there that might not be uh? I guess for lack of a better word, computer savvy and have uh maybe be challenging to fill out the uh the online. Is there any way that staff, even though remote? Is going to be able to help these people or how would we approach that?
So that's a great question. First of all, uh Kim Rowley is uh the lead on this project and has sent. Emails to all of the previous applicants. So she has been in touch many times regarding where we're at with this. I agree that in a in in a non-pandemic world, we would have easily had somebody come in the office and we would have helped them through the applica- application. Uh what we would like, we will continue to offer that service, except it will be via telephone. So if if somebody doesn't have access to to a computer, we will, we will find a way to have ax them. Uh access the computer uh in a safe way. We were going to put a laptop in the public area for people to to use. Obviously, we can't do that now, but the laptop can still be used. Uh we can find a way um for for people to be served in a socially distant way. And uh so I don't have an answer for. Exactly what that's going to look like, only that we are absolutely committed in in making sure that they're they're helped.
Any other questions? Uh Danny, any from your side?
No, I don't see that. There's a couple that I don't see. I don't see Richard.
Oh, you don't see Richard? Okay.
I don't see Richard anymore. I see basically the same as you see.
Oh, I get you. Okay. Okay, uh I have a question. Uh I'm, I do believe it pertains to this. So I see on your on your background and your background, it says YMCA, Yarmouth Airport, Mariner Center. Do those typically affect our grants to organization or do we normally have a separate line item?
We normally have a separate line item for the YMCA and the Mariner Center. What was the third one? Sorry?
And Mariner Center and Yarmouth Airport.
Oh, airport, yes. All of those would have separate line items. So they they don't um. They don't directly impact what we give to nonprofit organizations in our community. But they may impact the amount of money that's available to distribute, right? So the higher those numbers are. You know, obviously, that the less disposable budget line we have for other things, which could include grants to organizations. So uh this year is going to be extremely unique, so uh we haven't set our budget yet for that. But you're absolutely right to say that they are separate line items.
Very good. So the council, it's whatever your wish is. Would you, somebody like to make a motion or would you just want to leave it or what is your, what is your wish? I don't see anybody uh coming up with a motion or anything like that. Uh Danny, from your side, you.
I can make the motion. I can make a motion that suggested, and that's to extend deadline to September fifteenth for all grants to organization. Applications and enable partial funding for applicants up until this deadline to meet cash flow demands of our nonprofit organizations. Nice move.
Moved by Danny, a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lucia.
All second.
We've got Lucia seconded. Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
I've got my hand up, but I can't hear you.
All those can have raised your right hand. I've seen there. Okay.
Hello.
Okay, uh, can you get, can you hear me?
Hello.
All right, I guess we, there's one person we can't hear, or I can't hear.
Yeah, it's it's Junior.
Okay, we didn't see your hand, Junior.
No, I know. I I got it up somewhere, but.
Thank you, Junior. So you're in favor. Very good.
No, listen, I I don't know. I I my phone keeps going muted. You are muted. You are unmuted. You are muted. You are unmuted. And I've 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 raised my hand four or five times, but I I just, I can't get through.
Okay, Junior. I guess you know, problem. Keep on listening and when you're ready to speak, don't be scared to uh let us know what's going on.
Well, I just did.
Very good. You're doing okay. Okay, uh uh motion carry. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Public engagement for land use bylaw. Uh, public engagement for land use bylaw. I think you've got, there's no, uh, there's no items there. Would you want to speak on that for a minute, or is that table?
Well, um, it's more an information item, and Lori may have some, some, uh, some insight here as well. So, um, basically, we were planning on doing a public engagement to engage the residents on the changes of the L U V or land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy. That's not happening now. We can't do that in the way that we'd like to. However, we are planning to do a lot of, uh, to put a lot of information on Facebook, informing, uh, residents on the major changes that are occurring. And so Lori is the lead on that project, and she has quite a bit of information collected and gathered and ready to go up to the public. Now, it's, it's our plan to do a, a similar situation, like a Zoom type, uh, meeting, where, where we could put it live on Facebook and, and comments could come from the public. Um, we're just waiting on whether we actually do it this way. The province has been asked to give us direction on this, and we haven't received a response. Uh, I, I think it'll be positive. I think they'll, they'll say, yeah, it's a good idea, and we don't really have a choice. Our other choice is to do nothing and have our land use and municipal planning strategy delayed, and that's not an ideal situation at all. So the show must go on, we'd like to do it this way. We wanted to inform council, maybe get some, some of your feedback, and hopefully, um, hopefully, we can go to the province and let them know, uh, what we intend on doing to do it in, in a very similar fashion we're doing now. And I would suggest that people are at home, we might actually get more interest doing it this way than, than doing a, a meeting on some random Wednesday. So, um, anyway, those, that's, that part was only my personal opinion. But, uh, so that's where we're at with that. And I ju- I guess I just, uh, wanted to understand where council's head was around that and to let you know that we're waiting on the province to give us direction.
Thank you, Allah.
And, and Lori probably has, she may have, certainly has, uh, could have stuff to add, so I just wanted to put it up there.
Very good, Lori. Is that okay? Okay, there you go, Lori.
Yeah, so all I wanted to add was, I just wanted to find out from everyone if they want to move forward with the process, uh, as far as engaging the public, um, because we might come to a stop when it comes to the public hearing piece. Um, that's what we'll be waiting for from the province. Um, that's in the MGA, so we have to do that. So there's two things. We have to advertise in a local paper about the public hearing. We don't have a public paper right now, a local paper, I mean, um, but we could use the Chronicle Herald. So those are our options, that's what we're waiting on right now.
Thank you very much, Lori. Okay, uh, any questions on that, uh, from any other counselor? Danny, anything from your side? I think I see Calvin. Go ahead, Calvin.
I guess just to be clear about a public hearing, uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to think this over, uh, so we, we can't have, physically have a public hearing with people, uh, but legally, we can have it like a, a forum like this, or not.
That's what we're unsure of. The end is very clear on, on how it's, it's, it's to be done, so they'd have to give us direction to do it differently. Right now, as of today, we cannot do it this way.
Okay, all right.
The only piece we can do is the public engagement. Um, the only thing we can't do is the public hearing.
Yeah. So I, I guess Lori asked if we to, if we move forward, really, until we know what we can do and not do, we can't really move forward, can we?
We can move forward on the public engagement in hopes that the province will, um, give us some direction as far as public hearings, because I'm sure we're not the only municipality that's holding public hearings. So I think you will see that come out soon, but, you know, unknown.
All right.
Thank you, Councilor Dutton, more. Thank you, Lori.
Just in, in that public. Sorry, the public engagement piece is, uh, you know, we have a, a real opportunity to do it in, in a slightly elongated way. So, you know, like typically, what we have in public engagement is, is, is catch, well, catch can, like, like you're not necessarily getting the attention of the public on this issue, you know? So, and, and I don't mean that to offend the public, I mean it more to offend the, the topic. You know, the topic isn't necessarily, uh, uh, something that people have on front of mind. So, so, um, you know, this is, we really do have an opportunity to do engagement in a way that's unique and, and have the attention of the public on this matter. So, so it, it is, uh, I think it's important that we, we move forward with engagement, but you have to be aware that the engagement, we could do engagement, 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 and then not hit public hearing until, you know, June, or, or unless the, the rules change, right? So we're, we're doing it with a little uns- like that, and, and we would like you to give us some guidance on that.
Very good. Thank you, CEO Muse. Okay, moving forward, uh, we'll go to, uh, number seven for decision, solid waste tender. And on that part, uh, we, it's, uh, the tender was out for the solid waste collection contract, and, uh, there was just one bidder, one bidder, and, uh, I don't, I don't have here, CEO Muse, I don't have the total amount of that tender. Do you have a number? Could you unmute?
Uh, I have that number. I think the one that you have is showing the monthly fee, so let me just.
I just want the public to know that, you know, what kind of an expense in total dollars that is.
Okay, so, um, I'll start by indicating what the amount was, uh, last year.
Yes.
Well, actually, I'll start, maybe I'll ask Marcia to find that information, uh, while I'm looking at the, the new information, just one moment, please. Why is my mouse disappearing on me?
Take it down. There was only one company that did, and there was a waste call. They're the ones who had it last year.
That's right. So, uh, the base price per month, starting April twenty twenty, which is tomorrow, is a twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven, fifty-one per month, uh, without HST. So that would equal three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Our costs, because we don't pay the full HST, we get some of it refunded, is about three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So next year, that's what it will cost, and that would be, uh, for the collection of, uh, of, of, of solid waste. That compares to three hundred and thirty-two thousand and change last year. So there is an increase, as it typically does increase. Uh, the increases have been consistent, uh, they've been between three and four percent each year. Um, cost of doing business is increasing for, for the supplier. I, uh, the way that they deliver the services is, is probably one of the most efficient ways, uh, collecting every two weeks and using the machinery that they use allows us to maintain, uh, that number. We were also quoted, uh, initially, uh, a, a higher number for the service, but that was for a different type of service, an increased level of service. And I can assure you, it's significantly higher than, than that. So, um, uh, the, it's a, it's, we only had the one contractor bid. I, they, we have had absolutely great experience with this company. Uh, they have met all of the, um, rules and regulations around the tender, so I would recommend that we approve our loan bidder, um, for the contract amounts that are, that are listed in the report. Certainly, for those that go online and see the base price per month, um, you know, you can, you can see that the increase is approximately three point four percent a
Very good, council. Uh, there be any discussion, or would there be a mover? A seconder? Go ahead, the Councilor Digtin. Could you unmute, Councilor Digtin?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, no problem. I move that the negotiated pricing for solid waste collection be approved for the five-year term as requested in the original tender request.
A mover is a second.
I'll second that.
A mover and a seconder? Lori, have you got?
Can you hear me, Gee?
Ye- yes, I can.
Richard seconds it.
Very good.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or, raise your right.
Hands up.
Counter Mariner, nay, or raise your left hand. Yes, motion carry. Thank you, everyone.
Can you guys hear me?
The next one, we have a tax sale tender.
Do you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, relief of taxes for council's under consideration, and it's, this is a property that was sold at a tax sale, and, uh, the, uh, staff is looking for, uh, a relief of taxes on, uh, taxes on, on the property of two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty cents, uh, tax sale expenses of nine hundred dollars, uh, taxes of five fifty-one, seventy-two, and interest of seven sixty-six, which makes a grand total of two thousand, seventeen dollars and eighty cents. So we can have a mover in the second on that?
I'll move that we relieve, uh, the suggested amount for taxes.
Second, second.
Okay, moved by, uh, oh my God, and sent it by Calvin, by, by, uh, Roderick Junior. I forgot who, uh, who made the motion.
Lucia.
Lucia.
Thank you, Lucia. I lost your picture, somebody took your place. There you are, see you now. You've moved from my camera. Sorry about that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have a question first. I have a question first.
Thank you, sorry about that, Calvin. Go ahead.
Uh, I, I guess I'm just looking, uh, and it was sold on, uh, March twentieth, was it, at the tax sale? Maybe Allah can answer that?
Yeah, it was, it, it wasn't sold at the tax sale. It was part of the tax sale properties listed and was not bid on. So because it's been on our accounts for a while, um, our tax collector went to a, a public tender, which was an advertising saying, this is now for sale, we received the one bid, it's the only bid we received, and we had no minimum opening bid, uh, because it's, it's been, uh, it's been an issue for a while, um, and, and the, the successful bidder is, is, is closely, uh, is physically attached or close to that property, so it makes sense for that person to be interested.
Okay, I guess I was just wondering about, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to remember the rule that once you bought something from a tax sale, the original owner has six months to come up with the money, or how does that work?
Right, because it's been, um, uh, it's because it's been on the tax sale list as long as it has, it's, uh, it's, there's no redemption period. It's an.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, any more discussion? All right, all those in favors, raise your right hand.
Aye.
I'm very minded, raise your left hand. Motion carry. Uh, just something, Calvin, just to let you know that I lost you, and I got Danny now, so, uh, Danny, keep your eyes, if you can see Calvin, just to, just to, that'll help me. Thank you, Danny. Okay, we'll move on to seven C, transfer request to capital reserve, and believe me, Allah, I need you on this one.
No way.
I do need you.
So, um, part of the year-end planning, uh, every year involves, um, myself and Marcia looking at, uh, the finances very close to the end of the month. We have done that work, and what we, what we've uncovered is that we will be, uh, in a surplus position this year as, as, as we are every year. The surplus varies, but we were, we're never, we're never operating in a deficit. So, uh, we are predicting a, a surplus. There's still a lot to come in, we're, it, it is a projected surplus, it's not a actual surplus number that we're predicting at this point, but we are predicting that that surplus is in or around the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar mark. Some of that is not yours, some of it is, uh, I, I mean, council to spend, some of it, uh, belongs to West Pumnico, uh, wastewater, uh, committee, uh, as they operated in a surplus position this year, and so that surplus belongs to those that are on the wastewater system, not to all residents. So that two hundred and fifteen is not one hundred percent yours, and certainly isn't one hundred percent correct, but we are very confident that the number will be in our area. So, um, two, two things that we do every year is, is we, uh, take a look at what we've done for capital and determine whether we should do more. As you know, any transfer to the capital reserve is, is particularly for capital. So the, the reason why we're asking you to make this motion today is, is that we actually can't transfer into the capital reserve without, without the authority of the municipalities' council. And we are asking you to consider approving a transfer of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from that two hundred and fifteen estimated surplus. Um, what, what that means is, is that you will have transferred two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the capital reserve if you approve that recommendation. What you would have done at the time as the budget approval is that you would have approved a hundred and thirty-five through your budget. So that would have given us permission to, to transfer that money, but we don't have permission for this amount. Uh, why are we, why are we asking you to do this? Uh, it's, it's prudent to put aside money for capital purposes, especially, uh, when you look at asset management and, and replacement of, of, of assets that we currently operate. The, you might ask, be asking yourself the question, well, what about the rest of the surplus? Where does that go? And the rest of the surplus goes to our operating reserve, uh, in accordance with the accounting guidelines that the province gives us. So, so what we're basically saying is, all right, a portion of this will go to capital, and the rest will stay for operating purposes. So in light of the projects that we have now into the future, um, I, I would like to recommend that transfer to you, and I leave it to you for discussion.
Right, Allah, thank you. Uh, Danny, go ahead.
Yeah, I can make the motion. I'll move that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
I just did.
Okay, Junior did, so Danny, you want to second that?
Yes, I'll second that.
Very good. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, if none, don't, do you see Calvin or anybody else, Danny, on your side?
Calvin, Calvin has his hand up.
Yes, uh, you said one hundred and fifteen, and what was, where, how did that number? How, how did you come up with that number?
Um, well, I figured that it's certainly not a, a mathematical exercise of any sort.
Okay.
The, yeah, like there is in some form a formula. Uh, what I figured was approximately half in one place and half in the other. Now, it is, it was influenced, however, by, by the fact that in, um, we actually don't fund our depreciation, uh, through our tax rate. What we do is we pick a number that goes to the capital reserve. So bringing it to two hundred and fifty thousand from one thirty-five, when considering the, as well the gas tax that we receive, it allows for the amortization to be funded.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Very good. Very good. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, nay, motion carried and junior, we heard you. Okay, we'll move on to seven D. And it was about the waste park. And I've had a counselor who did contact me about people that had gone to the to the waste park to bring some stuff. Some people are doing cleanups around the house where they're not, they're not at work anymore, I guess, and they're in their sheds and that. And I've also had a few things on Facebook that people have contacted me that they've driven to the waste park and they were pretty, pretty, pretty upset, but you know, they, you want to know what was going on. If we couldn't, if, if there's something that the council could do to alleviate this problem when people are off and they are cleaning, if there's something we could do. And one of the suggestion was could we maybe on collection day, put some more, allow people to put more stuff on the side of the road? I said I would bring it up at this meeting and to see what if any other counselor was receiving any questions and if you would maybe entertain something like that. First of all, I'd like to pass it on to Alan, what, before I even go to ask the other counselors. Is there something in our contract with the hauler that would stop us from putting more stuff on the road?
Well, I think that if we're talking about garbage, that and not construction and debris, then there isn't currently a restriction on residential garbage. So if people are cleaning their shed or whatever, and it's not construction and debris, they can hold on to it. And when the time comes that the regular pickup comes, it will be picked up. The issue is construction debris. So I can't put construction debris and have it picked up on the side of the road, nor can I bring it as a resident to the landfill in this time. So that, you know, the resident, if nothing happens, so first of all, I have reached out to the hauler to ask certain questions. So I don't have answers as to whether we can improve that service at this time. I don't, I don't have an answer to that question. What I would do is encourage the residents that are doing that kind of cleanup is to unfortunately hang on to it until we can find a solution for that. Again, spring and fall cleanup. I will confirm that, that there is still a planned spring and fall cleanup. You know, so, so I think people should be aware of that. But again, spring and fall cleanup, construction debris is not something that gets picked up, nor are the electronics that are typically recycled. So unfortunately, some of those services are temporarily closed off to the resident. I can, I can understand the frustration for sure. And so, so for those that are cleaning up and throwing away, you know, the, the junk that, that would typically go on a spring cleanup, that will happen this year. I'll confirm that. And we are examining what else we can do to, to help our residents further. Anything that we do around construction debris pickup will come as a cost. It'll be an additional cost for, for us as a municipality. So we should be aware of that.
Right on, CEO Muse. So a couple of the people that had contacted me were saying that or they were questioning that the municipality of the district of Yarmouth were accepting all this stuff. But what I have found and I believe was that it was in their contract this year that they signed with the haulers that they could put stuff every week at the side of the road. Like we do it twice a year for fall and spring and fall cleanup. But they passed, I guess, from what I've understood, they passed for the haulers that they could put their, all the stuff every week if they wanted to, but it certainly would cost them more. And we're in our contract, CEO Muse, we don't have that, right?
No, we don't. And the change of the municipality of Yarmouth did, they, they did that far before the pandemic. So it just, it was just a change that they decided to make. I think it was in the collection of white goods, but forgive me if I may, I may not have that entirely accurate. I did check around with Claire and the town and the municipality of Yarmouth to confirm if they've made any changes in collection based on the pandemic. And the answer was no in all three cases. So the, so the municipality of Yarmouth is collecting slightly different, but it was, it was a decision they made months before all this.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Any counselor? Yes, counselor Dikden.
Being as though I guess a lot of people are in to something that we never ever thought we would be into. And a lot of people have time on their hands and they're doing a lot of construction and cleaning up a lot of debris around their, their places. And I wonder if it's something we could look at though, as far as having a special pickup, like when the big pickup is taking place, if it's something we could look at this year for this spring, having the construction and debris picked up this one time only being as though of what everyone's into right now and that just sort of to try and help our residents a little more. You're in a very difficult and strenuous time on everyone, I guess.
Yeah, we're, we're certainly, we're certainly looking, we're looking into that along with other options that might be equally suitable. You know, we understand the frustration and these frustrations are multiplied quite a bit in this environment. People are really feeling a lot more anxiety. And so what might feel to some like a small thing, it's, it's not necessarily a small thing to other people. And so we want to make sure that we, we, we manage the, this as well as we can. Alls I can say is, is that we have reached out to the hauler and we'll be discussing options with them around what they're capable of doing. Because they too have to, they, they too have, you know, issues with COVID. They have to do, you know, their work has changed as well. So, so I'll be reaching out. I certainly have reached out, but I don't have anything to report to you. I can assure you, we'll look at a bunch of options and bring it back to council as soon as possible for a potential decision.
Thank you, CEO Muse. Is that okay, counterdiction? Did you have a?
That all means that's okay. And I just think we should try and make every effort we can. That's all to, to help them a little bit this time around. Thank you.
Danny, anything coming from your side? You can unmute.
Richard, Richard.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just wondering more to Glenn's point. If there could be a, some notification put out that the waste park would open up to the public for a few hours a week or every other week for construction and debris brought in by the, the private person, not generally the contractor? Would that be something that could be looked into? If this goes on for quite some time, there's going to be a lot of people doing their own home renovation or tearing down an old building or whatever. So that's got to go somewhere at some time. So this could go on for months. So I just wondering if some provision could be put in place where the park could open up for that reason.
Counselor Donaldson, I tell you what, that certainly is a good recommendation. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to reach out to the board and have some kind of a online quick meeting about the subject. And certainly that, that's something we'll, we'll bring up to the, to the board. Great suggestion. I'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank, thank you. Yeah. The reason I keep mute my videos because you know, it's pretty hard to hold a cell phone steady for two hours.
You haven't been fishing for a while. Those hands are getting a little weaker. I'm just.
Well, I'm using my, I'm, I'm using my iPad to, to run agenda and holding the iPhone for, for the meeting. So I'm here. Whether, whether you can see me, whether you, well, it's another good thing I'm ugly. So I'm gone.
You're a cute little bugger. Don't worry. Thank you, Richard, for that. I'll keep you posted. Okay. If there's no other discussion, anybody else? Okay, fine. We'll move on to correspondence and for information. We have the Marinier Center funding and a letter from the municipality of the District of Yarmouth stating that it'll be keeping on with the agreement for the next 12 months. They passed the motion, so that's fine. Right? Next, financial request and community grants. Could somebody move the first one? Or Festival de Barre?
So move, so move.
Moved and seconded, Lori, you got that? Although that was $500 from the Festival de Barre. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raise your right hand?
Aye.
Counter my knee, left hand, motion carry. Next one is a community grant, St. Joseph Parish. Could somebody move that for myself, please?
I'll move it.
Move that.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Glenn. Dikden? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary minded, nay, motion carry. Community grant, and I believe Calvin, this would be yours? Seal Island?
Yeah, that's mine. I move that we give them $500.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary minded, nay, motion carry. Gee, was I forget about the hand, man. Okay, number D, community grant, Kenville Volunteer Fire Department. That would be Danny.
I move that we give the volunteer fire department $500 from the community grants.
Second.
Second, second, yeah.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, raise your right hand? Contrary minded, left hand? Motion carry. Any agenda topics for next meeting? Notion of, notion of motion by counselors?
I see, I see Grant had his hand up.
Glenn, sorry, I missed that. Thank you, Danny.
No, that's all right. I just thought there was going to be a little rundown. We had when we'd sent, had received the notice for tonight's meeting. CAO Muse that was wondering if the counselors, any, any rundown on what they've been doing or anything like that?
My apologies, Glenn.
No, 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 it's not there. I was just wondering if you still want to go ahead with it or what?
I would certainly say yes. Please, please move forward, counterdiction.
Yep, no problem. Just, I'm just gonna do it very shortly here. I met with the manager of the Delator Quop and the grocery front end manager about doing some food orders for people down here. I've been doing some orders, actually done another one today. It's been doing good. I, they send me their order. I do the shopping for them. Drop it off on their front steps or under steps, whatever. I leave, I make sure they're walking out before I leave, so nobody else gets their groceries or anything. And then they just e-transfer even me the money. That seems to be working well. Also met with Jenny Proudie from the Pharmisave here in Publico and offered to do any, any trips for her as far as dropping off medications or anything like that for people that may have a hard time getting out to get them. Was also talking to Reverend Bill Newell from the Food Bank in Yarmouth. Things are going well there. And they're getting quite a bit of food, actually more than what they normally get because some of the smaller food banks in the province have closed downs. They're getting food from feeding Nova Scotia and things are going well there. It is making a little harder, like you said, as far as on the volunteering and stuff like that, the distribution of food, but it is working. And known Reverend Newell is going to continue to work because I'm sure he's behind it 100%. Also talked to the lady that takes care of the food bank down here in Publico. They've had no new cases as far as people picking up food because of the COVID-19 virus. So things are going well there. And the only thing I'd like to do is thank everybody that's keeping everything going right now there for us. The healthcare workers, the first responders, people that you never even think of. A lot of times you're truck drivers and all this, this, you know, we take the, tend to take for granted a lot. But it's because of all these people out there now that everything is working as well, as well as it is right now in Nova Scotia. So I'd like to say a big thank you to them. And that's all I have to report here this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Dikden. Anybody else? Raise your right hand. I'll just add something that I'll just add something myself that I was talking to Peggy Boudreaux, our senior coordinator. I think Alan might have alluded to that earlier when he, he spoke, but she was telling me you wouldn't believe the people, whether it be single mothers, it'd be seniors who are quite frail on the edge, on the edge before the pandemic arrived. And this has, some of them pushed them over where they're really struggling to make it go. Or trying to bring groceries in or, or pay a few bills. So you know, don't be scared to check on your neighbors or if you find anything out that you hear of people like that, contact your counselors, let them know. And I know every one of us will do their darnedest best to pitch in and, and you know, we, we do have an emergency fund that we can dip into to help those, those people that are in need. Yes, Counselor Rob.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of say the same thing. The scene, I've checked in with quite a few seniors just to make sure that they have what they need. And I feel like same as you just said, there's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of uncertainty. But they're prepared. I find that they're making sure that they're prepared. So they, they have people that are helping them get groceries. I know quite a few of them are using the services at Carl Store in this area, which has been helpful. They're, they're afraid and rightfully so, afraid to go into grocery stores. I haven't been in a grocery store yet, so I understand, I understand where they're coming from. On the, on the flip side of, you know, I'm a teacher as well, educationally, there are folks that are worried about what's going on in the schools as well. And, and we were just delivered the educational platform yesterday and teachers are trying to wrap their heads around it. We're not accustomed to having anything online for students. And university students are home. I'm sure Marsha has some at home as well that are navigating through what that new reality looks like and, and it's, it's not the same. And there's some anxiety there and they're thinking about their summer prospects and their jobs. So there's a lot of uncertainty around. And it's just, it's just about touching base with people and making sure that, you know, that there is a link between, between them, a communication link between them and, and us, and making sure that they know that we're here for them if they need us.
Very good, Counselor Rob. Great. Glad to hear that. Yes, Counselor Bo.
Yeah, me as well. I've contacted some seniors in, in the area, delivered groceries as well. Made myself available for them as well. All I would like to say is thank the staff and the municipality. They're doing a very good job of what they're doing, relating the messages out to us. And I, I think we have to give a, a big thank you to Dr. Strang and the premier as well. I mean, they're, they're very on top of everything and giving us updates all the time. And I guess I, all I have else to say is wash your hands and have patience and be kind to each other and stay healthy. We'll get.
Put it on and, and hold on to that toilet paper. It's important to have.
Fresh.
Danny, do you see anybody on your side by that? Something you say?
I haven't, no, I haven't. I've probably seen the same people you're seeing.
Richard.
I'm going to go over here. Richard, yeah, Richard has his hand up.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you. Yes. I applaud the work Glenn's doing and I've gotten contact with my doctor. He's, he totally told me I'm in the high risk category and to be very careful because of my diabetes and high blood pressure. And I've been touching, reaching out to my mom who is far more in touch with the older elderly people, the community. So she's going to let me know if there's anybody that needs immediate help and then also another person I'm in contact with. So if something comes up, I will get in contact with somebody that can go. can go get groceries, unlike Nicole, I, I don't go to the grocery store, I don't go anywhere except for uh solo rides in my vehicle and to keep some sense of sanity. So anyhow, uh, people are being uh looked out for the best, to the best of my knowledge, but I'm definitely not going to go to uh put myself or anybody else in jeopardy at this time, but I'll, I'll be there if anybody needs it. Thank you.
Very good, Counselor LeBlanc?
Um, and you've all touched on similar things I've been doing in the community, but I'd just like to take a minute to maybe update council on the state of the lobster fishery.
Yes.
There's been a lot of questions, you know, what, what, what's going to happen there, because clearly with the world being in the status in, markets can't sustain. Basically, markets can't sustain product likely coming in the next month. Um, and there's a lot of uncertainty, you may have heard as of recent days compared to maybe last week or the week before, the price of lobster has maybe gone up to five, possibly six, possibly 650, just maybe today or yesterday. However, um, it's my personal opinion, it's a false uh positive sign, um, we're this week here typically historically throughout uh our fishery is always a week of high prices because we're, there's very little LFA's that are currently open. There's a lot uh in the Gulf and Cape Breton that will open in the approaching two, three weeks. Um, and the fall lobster, usually saved lobsters, two lobsters that were held from this fall are gone. So there's no old stock, there's not much stock coming in, and there's not many districts open, so this is usually historically um, a high-priced week, so the reason there was maybe a possibly a small jump was because there's no product being landed, and there are very, very, very small markets still taking a few lobster in various areas. Uh, the big question is going to be what happens three weeks from now for a spring fishery, so uh I just thought I'd update you that just like many industries, nobody's got an answer what's going to happen, however, LFA 36, which for those of you who might not be familiar, would be the New Brunswick side of the Bay of Fundy has put in place, working with the F O, a variation order, they've delayed their season a month. They're supposed to open up soon here, and they will wait a month uh due to markets. So uh, that may set precedent or may not for other districts, it's still up in the air, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor LeBlanc, Ward and Muse?
Yeah, uh, I don't have much to report because I, I'm not getting too many calls from anybody. I myself haven't been in the grocery stores as well. Um, I go, I, I order my, I order my groceries and pick them up. Um, I try to stay away as much as I can, I'm here to help if anybody needs help. They just have to give me a call and I'll do what I can. Uh, I try to stay away from, like I said, I try to stay away from, from public places as much as I can. I have a, a bit of a heart condition as well that I have to watch. So it's something that I feel that I've, I've got to look after myself as well. So anyway, I'm not getting a lot of calls, uh, some of the calls were for uh were for if the, the uh trails are open, that type of call. Uh, I think, talking to Pam Mood, she's getting calls from our area as well, and I, I'm not sure why that is happening. They're calling, they're calling Pam Mood on some of the uh if they want information. Now maybe it's because she's, she's on, she's on Facebook all the time, and she, she's uh making herself available and, and telling people that she's available, and I don't know if that's why, that's why they're calling her. And she says, well, if it's anything that I can handle, I, I, I pass it on, I'll pass it on to whatever counselor there is, but I haven't had anything, so I'm not sure if, if there is anything that she feels that, that she should pass on to us.
Um, I got my, I got my hand up after.
Okay, you're, hold on, you're next on the list.
Yeah, and um like, like Kathy said, the staff is doing, we're, we're staff is doing all they can do, and I think they're doing a, a great job, and we have to keep them informed, we have to, to, to do updates uh through Facebook or through our, uh uh, uh, not the Facebook, but our, our uh, our page. So anyway, I think that's all we can do, but like I said, so that the public knows if they're watching, that I can uh you know, i- if they need something that I can do, definitely.
Thank you, Ward and Muse, okay, Counselor Murphy, you're on?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to reach out to the citizens of, of uh of my district and the municipality of Argyle, that if anything I can do for them. Uh, I also don't go in, in stores, I, I just keep away. If there's anything I can do uh for, for, uh, for anybody, uh you know, by all means, for them not to hesitate to call me at home, and, and I'm still mobile, but it's just like Richard, I was just uh, my immune system, I kind of keep away from, from things, because my immune system is not probably the best as, as it's been before, and two weeks ago I was diagnosed with diabetes. So now I'm on, on medication, pills in the morning, pills at night, and insulin at night, so but if anything I can do for the municipality of Argyle, uh, Anywheres or anywhere else, uh I, I'd gladly help out as much as I can, so other than that, uh, just for all the residents, uh, and you guys, be safe.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Uh, Danny, do you see if Calvin has his hand up, or is he okay there?
I've got my hand up. There he is.
Calvin, go ahead.
Great, thank you, uh, Deputy Ward, and yeah, I just wanted to, you know, basically touch on on what most of people have been talking about, I've been keeping my, my ears and my eyes open in my community, uh, you know, sporadically or once in a while going to the, to the store and going for walks on the trail to, you know, to uh, you know, ease my mind, and I haven't gone to see my mom and dad for a few weeks, which is a, a rarity, because uh, you know, we're usually dropping almost every day, I live about a quarter of a mile away, so that's been a, a little bit different, but uh I, you know, basically stay away from people, believe it or not. And, but uh, keep my ears open and uh, you know, try to kind of take everything in, and if somebody needs some help, uh, I'm here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doctor Moore. Okay, uh, next on the list, if there's, I think we've had everybody uh speak, uh would be question period, Alex, can you see anything?
Yes. Yes, there are some, some other questions that came up, that have come up since, um, a couple of things that I wanted to mention, um, we uh Peggy and um, uh, through senior safety often is uh, is called on, on some of the elderly in the town as well, so it's, it's the, the calls kind of go both ways, right? So I think that uh, you know, because the town does not have a senior safety coordinator, sometimes uh, uh, Ms. Rhino or, or Peggy uh from municipalities of Yarmouth and, and Argyle are asked to to help in a particular situation, and, and they do, and I, and I think that the, the, you know, and uh, obviously there, we keep the town apprised of those kinds of uh services uh that are provided. I did mention the fact that the senior safety coordinators are not visiting the homes, but that does not mean they're not serving those homes. So they have their phone numbers and they're checking in on the, on their, on their higher risk clientele on a daily basis, and they're working very closely with Remo as well as the V O N, uh, who has offered uh uh services to their, to, to, to their um um, patients or to their, to their residents through a frozen food program. Uh, so I, I think uh, there's a lot that's happening, um there's a lot of helpers that have come out of all of this, and uh, and we hope that that continues for sure. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that, that those things were happening. Um, so there was a question regarding uh monies in the budget for Publico Lake Road ditching and repairs, um, I would say that um, that uh was actually a provincial responsibility, but what we can do is, is make sure that it, that, that information, that's a lot our N L A, Colton Liblaw, who can perhaps follow up on that question, and, and uh, I don't know, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a question coming I can't tell who the question is being asked, I, I don't have that information in front of me. Uh, however, obviously if you wish to um engage with your municipal counselor, you can also do that as well, if you're, if you're comfortable doing that. But the, the, the question was in relation to when we were talking about grants to organizations, so um, it's, it's, it's not, the money is not for that purpose unfortunately, for uh, the Pubnico Lake Road. Um, I think that's the uh, and, and then there was a question about spring cleanup monthly start, uh, having a monthly spring cleanup starting now, where the dump is closed, pickup including as many items as possible, tires, wood, demolition. So that, that was asked while we were having that conversation, and I, I hope that I answered the question by by saying that we're, we're currently looking at our options on that uh side of things. And I think that is all of the questions. And, and there was, uh, so at one point somebody asked, is there any cases of COVID in uh in, in, in the municipality, and I said no, and that that information isn't being shared. Well, well, like literally fifteen, twenty minutes after that, I get a, a, a message saying, province to start showing how many COVID-19 cases are in each health zone. So we will not be getting that information by municipality, but the health, the western health zone, which runs from the valley to Bridgewater and everything in between, uh, they'll, they, they will be, be now be indicating how many cases are in those, in those zones, so we will get that.
Interesting. Very good, uh, C O Muse, that's it then, from your end, questions? Well, thank you. Okay, now we're entertaining a motion to go into camera.
Motion to go into camera.
Back in.
All those in favor, say the bar by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary my name, motion carry. Scott, you let us know when uh
Key, you're muted. You're still muted.
Yeah, I muted everybody.
Oh, okay.
You're okay, you're off.